Good evening, everyone. We will call the special city council meeting, a vision of the vision, a meeting of the Vision Fund Committee meeting to order. First order of business is the roll call. Heidi.
Estes, Peterson, Lewis, Doyle, Wright, Scott, Nordstrom, Roberts, Clayton, Laurenti. We have a quorum.
We will now recognize Pastor Dale Barcher from the Family Heritage Alliance for invocation. You are welcome to participate, but not required.
Good evening. Let us pray. Father, we come to you grateful for another day of life. Our community, as always, is in transition and, Lord, we know it takes great wisdom, effort and unity to keep her on the right course. Come alongside tonight's city council meeting. Bless these servants of our city and their families as they seek our community's greater good. Father, tonight, we are mindful that this is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We pray for those who are walking through this trauma. For those who are survivors, we pray for their strength and for family members and friends who stand by their side, ready to offer comfort and encouragement, we pray. May we leave here tonight remembering, as always, that all authority in heaven and earth has been given to you and to you alone. Yes, we live, breathe and serve at your pleasure. We pray tonight in the name of the One who is the same yesterday, today and forever, the Lord our God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Dale. And as Pastor Dale mentioned in his prayer, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. As you can see, I'm wearing pink tonight. And we have our fire department throughout the month of October. On Mondays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, we'll have pink uniforms on. And if you'd like to learn more about Breast Cancer Awareness Month, you may call the fire department non-emergency line at 394-4180 or call my office number at 394-4110. We want to encourage everyone to become aware of breast cancer and how important it is for prevention and screening. Coming up in a few weeks will be the sixth anniversary of my sister Bonnie's death from cancer. It wasn't breast cancer, but it was terrible nonetheless. And it's cancer has touched my family and the families of many others. And so we just really want to encourage you to be aware of this disease and how important it is to go in for screenings on a periodic basis. Tonight is a meeting of the Vision Fund Committee. And although the Vision Fund Committee is comprised of the city council members, it functions as a subcommittee of the city council and is chaired by the city council president. This committee serves as a recommending body to the city council. Action taken by this committee is referred to a regularly scheduled city council meeting for final action by the full council. This is a periodic meeting that we have regarding the status of the Vision Fund projects. The first part of the agenda, items one, two and three are, will be to hear status of several projects from outside applicants. And then the remaining projects, some of which do also involve outside applicants, but those reports will be given by city staff. So with that, I will be, I will be staying in the meeting to answer any questions you might, you might have. But I will be passing the gavel over to our council president, Jerry Wright, to chair the remainder of tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first item is item one, which is the downtown parking ramp Presidential Plaza. And we have an update from, I believe, Hani Shafi. Please, Hani. Excuse me. If there's anyone in here that wants to address it, unless their presenters want to address one of the issues that's on the agenda, would you please fill out a speaker request form and have it brought up to us so we can not miss you? I'm sorry if you interrupt you, Hani. Anyone that is not testifying for a project but would want to comment on one that's not theirs, please call them out. Okay, Hani, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the council and Mr. Mayor and members of the audience. My name is Hani Shafi with Dream Design and also with President's Plaza LLC, which is the developer for this project. My partner, Pat Hall, is not available today to come in. He's a little under the weather today, so he could not make it. But as you're aware, this project has started a while back and we have proceeded with designs. The designs for the parking garage or the parking ramp are 100% complete. The rest of the structure is about 80% complete. The efforts for the design are basically at standstill right now, pending final decision on the new market tax credits. As you're aware, that we have been in the process for almost near nine months, working and acquiring a new market tax credits for the project. Why are we applying for a new market tax credits? A lot of questions are surrounding that item. New market tax credits are a method to revitalize or help with projects that are within distressed areas, which this district, in which this project exists, is a distressed area as defined by the Census Bureau, for the purpose of new market tax credits. Why do we need new market tax credits for this project? And the reason for that is basically there are, the costs of the project are way higher than what is similar in other area relative to the revenues of the project. And there are different components within the project which are public in nature that will not be completed without public funding. The city has helped, thanks to the mayor and his efforts and to the members of the council. You know, a TIF was established to fund the portions of the parking garage and do some of the cleanup. There are other components that are public in nature, which is basically a conference center, which we're hoping that this project will bring more people into the downtown area. There is approximately seven to seven and a half million dollars associated with the conference center. And it's going to be something that will bring more people into the downtown. The downtown as we know it is going through a lot of good changes, thanks to the efforts of the downtown groups and especially to the Dan and his group, you know, you've done a great job. And Mr. Ray Heldenbrand, too, you know, their efforts, you know, have done a great job for the downtown. That effort has to be continued through our group and through other community groups within the downtown. The, our application for the new market tax credits was received in a very high regard when we presented the application at the new market tax credit at Resnet Cohen Conference in Miami. And unfortunately, a lot of the groups or the CDEs that were at the conference have already have lists of projects that they were committing to. We were hoping to be on their list for any project that may drop out. You know, still there is a chance. We don't really know at this cycle. Luckily, the council, the Congress has approved two cycles of new market tax credits. One, which was distributed last April, was three and a half billion dollars. Council approved, I mean, the Congress also approved another round for the next year, which is also another three and a half billion dollars. So the, when the government shut down New Year's Eve of 2012, which is about the first of this year, Congress approved two years in a row, three and a half billion dollars each. So the second three and a half billion dollars has not been distributed or allocated yet. We are on the list with few CDEs that showed huge interest in this project and its impact on the community. The project has a website and I'd be more than happy to share it with all of you. And it has a lot of the detailed information, regardless if it is community impact, which is a third-party study that was commissioned by us through the University of Maryland, which is a group that does a lot of new market tax credit studies and their impacts on the communities, because otherwise you would not qualify for a new market tax credit. So where we stand with new market tax credits today is basically we're waiting for the new allocations to be distributed among the CDEs. And hopefully the CDEs that we have our names with them will be receiving some of those allocations. We did get some little allocations that we could have used towards the project, but they were very little. And we recommended that we don't, we don't tie up those small allocations from somebody else who could use them this cycle, because they will not be adequate for this project. So therefore, we're waiting for allocations for hopefully in the very near future. The public has to realize that this project is a huge project and it would have huge impact on the community. The project costs are still little upward of $15 million. The project size is approximately twice of what is stated in the contract agreement that we have within, with the city of Rapid City. And the reason for that, you know, why that size? Because you really want to maximize the impact on the community and you want to have the project deliver its goals that were set forth by the community. The agreements that we have with the city really don't have a specific date to start construction, but we intend to start construction as soon as new market tax credits are allocated. If the new market tax credits are not allocated this cycle, then we will sit down with the city and evaluate if we need to downsize the project. That will be a decision that will be made by the city more than us. And the reason for that is, you know, it's up to the city how, how to proceed. As far as funding, the public has spent zero dollars on this project so far. There is no public money spent so far on this project, not a penny. As a matter of fact, the parking lot is still being used by the public, you know, for parking. And the city is gathering some of the revenues to pay and some of that goes to pay for the bonding for the existing parking ramp. The developers have spent close to 1.8 million dollars on the project so far. And it's all in cash money without any funding from the city. So therefore, this process is going. There is no risk for the taxpayers so far, but we really cannot sit on the project forever. We realize that. And we will be looking for the mayor's leadership and you folks, you folks' leadership, you know, if new market tax rate allocations are not secured this cycle. We are very optimistic, because last cycle we were late and we were able to gather some. Hopefully this cycle, we will gather a lot more and we'll make this project into reality. I will be available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go, before we go to questions. Okay, I have a speaker request to address it, but is that all right? Okay. Do you want to acknowledge her or do you want to hear the comments? I have a motion, all right. Motion to acknowledge. Is there a second? Okay, a motion made and second to acknowledge. Discussion. I do have a speaker request form from Mr. Dan Seffner, President of Destination Rapid City. And then we'll turn to the council if they have any questions.
I'm Dan Seffner, Destination Rapid City. Honey, I want to thank you for the comment very much. But I want to just go back in time a moment. Many of us were here in 1977 when the buildings on St. Joe Street were torn down. And I remember quite well then that we were going to do something on that lot in 1978. And then I remember it in 1979 and I remembered it in 1980. And I just want to encourage our city leaders that we follow through with some sort of a deadline, a commitment. I understand the work that it takes to put a project together. It is a very big job and a big effort. We've seen many deadlines come and go. And Mr. Shafi has done wonderful things for Rapid City. I do not speak in any way about any of that. However, that lot is still sitting there. There's been $2.8 million sitting in city finance office for how many years? Since 2005. It's 2013. Now, new American tax credits, I agree, they are a very important factor. The percentage of that is pretty difficult. Not saying it can't happen, it certainly can. But the fact remains that we, as a city, have something going right now and we have some movement. And if we don't keep moving, it stops. And that lot is valuable to produce what we are looking at doing in our downtown. It is a key time right now. I just encourage, obviously, Mr. Shafi to follow through. I encourage our city, our city government to follow through and to take a close look at everything going on. And somehow, somewhere, I don't know this timeline, 2013, 2014, I know this. If a, if a project is 50 million this year, it's not 45 million next year. Chances are it's 54 million next year or the year after. And I know what it takes to make this all put together. And I just encourage us to take a close look, watch this in the future in the day and see where we go with this and have someone assigned to make sure that this project is on track and is moving forward for our downtown and for Rapid City. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I'm prepared to take comments from council if there are any. Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I ask a question of Pauline Sumpson, please? Mr. Chair, yes?
Oh, of course you can.
Thank you.
I was waiting for her to say, "Go ahead." I'm sorry. Yes, you may.
Hi, Pauline. Mr. Shafi had mentioned that there is current revenue being collected in the parking lot that is existing today on this piece of property and that those funds are being allocated or used to pay for the bonding of the potential new parking lot? Did I understand that correctly?
No, that's not correct. All of our parking lot revenues, no matter where the lot is located, our meters, our fines, all of that is dedicated towards the bond on the third level of the parking structure that we currently have.
So the, the park, are there parking meters on this piece of property, existing piece of property?
Not parking meters, but there are leases on this property.
So, but that's paying for the third level of the parking lot next to Main Street Square?
Correct. The parking system as a whole is the revenue source for the bond that is on the third level of the ramp.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chair, may I direct a question at Joel Levine, please?
Certainly.
Joel, Mr. Shafi indicated that there are no real deadlines for the project itself. But how do the deadlines, since this, since this $2.8 million has been on the books or wrapped up in this project since 2005, what kind of action would it take by the council in order to continue this? Or is there a deadline that this expires? Since its Vision Fund?
In the agreements that we currently have, there were no hard deadlines. The, the TIF expires and that would be, I believe, 2017. All the discussions we've had with Mr. Shafi are that it would not take that long, but technically that would be what they have. You know, now that you bring up the vision aspect of it, there is something I just thought of and I'll, I'll probably look into that more, but I can't, I'm not going to go into that right now, because I want to look at that a little more.
As far as the Vision Funds and how they're affected?
Yes.
So you'll provide an update later?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, may I ask?
Certainly.
Mr. Shafi some questions? Hi, Hani.
Hani?
As Mr. Seffner wants to, I want to reiterate what Mr. Seffner said. You've done some great things for the city, but this is a project that has been out in front of the public several times. And so I understand that it would be greatly beneficial to get these new market tax credits. However, since we didn't get it this cycle and the next cycle is going to be in 2014, and if the process, and I'm referring to the federal government, because I don't know if we're shut down tomorrow yet or not, if the federal government still participates and next year having the same difficulty that they've been having in 2013, the new market credits may not actually be allocated or awarded until late 2014. And if you're waiting to even relook at the scope until after we find out about what those new market or new market tax credits allocations look like for the second cycle, which will be in 2014, does the downscoping of this project, if it were to be downscope, affect the money allocated from the Vision Funds for the parking structure?
No.
So is there, and I'm just asking because I don't really understand, but is there any reason why this parking structure could not be constructed before the new market tax credits are all allocated?
Yes, there are. There are a few columns within the parking structure that are overdesigned to carry the conference center and other amenities associated with the conference center. If the new market tax credits are not gathered or not secured, then there will be changes in the upper levels of the structure in which it will result into savings within the columns for the parking garage. So the substructure and portions of the superstructure for the parking garage will be reduced immensely. The cost of the parking garage actually exceeds, exceeds what is currently allocated by the TIF for the parking garage. So therefore, some of the new market tax credits allocations were actually utilized to make up the deficit for the parking garage in addition to the conference center and some of the components that go with the conference center. So therefore, we don't mind paying for the deficit on the parking garage if there is a big project. But if there is a smaller project, then we have to reduce some of the costs associated with the parking garage by reducing some of the elements, not the parking garage size, but some of the elements associated with it that may not be needed if there is no big conference center above it. I hope that makes sense.
Not knowing what the opinion from the city attorneys are going to be on the Vision Fund and the expiration dates that may be out there for the Vision Fund money, this looks like it may exceed the 2015 time period of having Vision Funds allocated and used for projects. Is there, when would you need the $2.8 million? The reason I'm asking, and I'll be perfectly honest with you, there are many other projects
Yes.
that could utilize that $2.8 million. And if it looks like it's going to be at least another 12 months, then it may be that we can shuffle this around or use some other allocation.
I believe that this project should go further, no later than the end of 2014, regardless if it is the full-blown project as it exists today, if the new market tax credit allocations are allocated, or downsized project if new market tax credits are not allocated. I don't believe that the public or the developers or the city council has the appetite to really extend this any further than the beginning of 2015 for actual start construction date. And the reason I say, unless the city chooses to. And the reason I say that, we actually spend money every day that we're doing work on the project, which is our choice. But it's the commitment that we have made for the project and to the community. And we're going to continue with that commitment until we deliver it. And we're going to deliver a project, regardless if it is the full-blown project or a downsized project. And hopefully the construction will start either before the 2014, the end of 2014. If not, if there are major design, design changes working with the city on, it might take us till the first quarter of 2015. I really don't know. I cannot give you exact dates, because exact dates and commitments that we have indicated in the past is what gets people excited and all of a sudden, my gosh, they said this or this or that. I really don't want to pinpoint a specific date at this stage, but we will discuss it with the city staff and the city council and the mayor to make sure that the taxpayers are happy, the council is happy and the mayor is supportive, which he's been supportive with this project so far. So that's, that's what we'll hope to continue. But I don't believe that we want to drag it on as long as what people anticipate or as long as what, or similar to what have people seen in the past. Because the past, this was our first go-around, by the way, on new market tax credits. We've never, as a community, to my knowledge, done new market tax credits. This is our first go-around as a group with new market tax credits. And I tell you what, we've learned a lot. And we found out that, wow, we are missing out on a lot as a community. And I hope that this will be a learning experience, not just for this project, but for other projects. We've already hired actually, or gave the green light for our consultant in new market tax credit to help with another project for a nonprofit within Rapid City. You know, the Pennington County Health Board has actually hired the same person who's doing new market tax credits for us, hopefully to help them with gathering a new market tax credits for that project. And we're on board, we're communicating with them, sharing information, because we've learned a lot and we want to bring that knowledge back into the community. I hope that helps.
That does. I'll be waiting for the update from our city attorney
Thank you.
as far as expired, expiry dates. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, first off, I have a comment. There's no question that Hani and Pat have proven their ability to deliver projects to the community. I just think of the ribbon cutting that I just attended here the other day at the School of Mines. Having said that, this is quite another project that, and I guess my question, Mr. President, is actually for Joel. And I guess I have, you know, if, Joel, if 2015 comes and let's say they don't get their tax credits, and let's say the project has to be modified, is that modification within their, I try, I tried to read all the, there's a master agreement and then there's about six addendums. And so I'm trying to fully understand this. And if, if, if the scope of the project gets modified, does that open this project up to other interested parties? A, and B is, is if it, if, if by 2015, we, the parties decide to go their separate ways, are there any damages, financial or does either party, do we, do we make, are we required to make them whole on their expenses in any way, shape or form? Or I guess I'm trying to figure out how we may be tied together should, should this not work out?
Well, part of the question I can answer, my understanding is if they downsize the project, it'll still be within the, the size set in the agreement where the size of the project is set. If they
If they were going to deviate from the minimum square footage, that would need council approval. But my understanding is that the project as proposed is much larger than the square footage that's, that's identified in the agreement. So by downsizing it, they mean they would downsize it to something smaller than what they've currently proposed, but still within the amount of square footage allowed in the agreement. I think I would rather answer some of those other questions via attorney-client communication and not answer that publicly from the dais.
Other comments? I think you sense there's a desire for us to see this thing done or move on, don't you?
Yes, and we share the same desire, if not more.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Dan said it well, too, so thank you, Hanny. And let's work with vigor to get this where it needs to be or wherever we need to be. Thank you. The next item is the, item number two, the Ata Powaw facility with Daphne Richards Cook and Mark Van Norman. Do I have a motion? This is a report on status. You made a motion? Oh, excuse me, just a minute. Thank you. Thank you. We need a vote to approve or acknowledge the report on the downtown parking grant by Hanny Shaffey. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The Ata Powaw facility with Daphne Richards Cook and Mark Van Norman, 2005, Phase Three. You're here to do a presentation and as the wishes of the council to hear the presentation prior to taking any motion or making any motion. So it shall be. Daphne?
I'm happy to share with you the fundraising packet that we had put together, about, it's about a couple of years ago, we did that, so there's some changes with some of the representation and with the mayor, too. We needed to get that, so, but within the, um, the packet, I'm happy to share that with you. And one of the things that we're immensely confident about, that this project will take a strong foothold for new audiences to be able to, that have a strong passion for the Northern Plains' tribal cultures, history, arts, lands, and language. We are working to share our way of life and knowledge with those that wish to learn and to do so in a way that is respectful and helps the circle grow. I would also like to thank the city of Rapid City for making a generous step in making funds and the land site available to the Alliance of Tribal Tourism Advocates. One of the things that we're also doing is that we're establishing a timeline here, a new timeline, to be able to move forward and to show what we've done in the past and creating new partnerships. In 2005, Ata received approval from the vision fund for $812,000. 2006, we had worked with Jim Meyerhouse and others to be able to develop a business plan that talked about some of the components within the project. And we did that. In 2006, we also worked with the city council. We had worked with the Journey Museum and working with different board members because we were expecting to look at different land availability around the area. In 2010 and 11, final sites were selected, architectural plans and construction plans were done. 2011, we came in with that fundraising for construction, and we had developed a website, atattribal.com, and a publication. 2012, we worked with, started working with Mako Chumakochi Washte. And within the money that we did get, we also had money for study for architectural and construction, which is ready. The site is shovel-ready, ready to go. So one of the things that we're trying to do is establish this partnership with Makochi Washte. And the money that was given to us was $159,344, which we have $652,656 left. When the project first started, we had leveraged $100,000. We had leveraged a lot, probably about $50,000 worth of in-kind support and being able to establish all the different types of marketing material, getting out there doing guerrilla marketing, which we did get a lot of press out to the southwest in different places. We request additional 24 months to complete the Phase One, which is within the, within the packet, the publication that we have received. If you look on page seven, we have the Phase One pieces within them. And one of the really things that was really impressive that we did write, Ata currently is exploring partnerships with other Rapid City-based nonprofits and institutions of higher education to provide more land, venue capable of accommodating a large-scale summer powel and native art market, even equal in size to the Denver March Albuquerque. But we also want to, to be able to note that, we were establishing a partnership to help leverage additional resources. I'd like to introduce Noe Kalipi and Mark Van Norman with Makochi Washte to be able to continue to explain a little bit more about some of our MOU and some of the other things to help Ata and both of us move forward to provide this cultural center. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, pleasure to be here today. My name is Mark Van Norman, and we have a small nonprofit called Makochi Washte Development Corporation, and we're providing technical assistance to United Tribes Technical College and Sinte Galesca University about some of their efforts to come to Rapid City and develop educational institutions and, and economic development. So we've also worked in partnership with Ata, and we're looking to help them get this project done. They need a little bit more time. The deadline is coming up on December 31st for completion, and we need probably another year for more fundraising, and we think we can have the project completed for construction within two years in accordance with the plans that have been developed. So, and as I understand the ordinance, you know, there's a requirement for a new memorandum of understanding to provide for additional timeframe. You know, we believe based on the work that's already been done and the interest of the tribes and the educational institutions in this project that we can be successful. So we're asking your indulgence to enter into new memorandum of understanding. Is that okay on the timeframes? Yeah. So that's where we're at. You know, Daphne has done a lot of this work herself over a period of time, and she felt that she needed a little bit more help, so she asked us to come in during the last year to help her out, and we think we can provide the help that she needed. We've recently worked with the tribes to acquire a sacred site up in the Black Hills called Peishla in a short order. We raised the money for that, so we think, given a reasonable amount of time, we can be successful in raising the match and moving this project to completion.
Okay. Chad, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to work to, with the applicant, to direct, to develop a new MOU and with some benchmarks and dates to meet. I'll give you a second.
Second.
Motion by Chad and by Bonnie is the second. Would you like to continue?
No, I yield the floor.
John?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Daphne for all her hard work in this. This is a wonderful project. I'm looking very forward to the completion of it, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
No other comments? We have a motion to direct staff to work with, I'm sorry, Richie.
Get this microphone in position here. Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know who I get to direct this question to, but all three of you can take a stab at it. The, is the funding that you've raised, is that public information yet? How much money you've raised on this project?
I think we said, how much have you raised? Okay, I think that was what she was trying to report earlier. That she's raised $100,000 so far in cash from private donors and $50,000 in in-kind, and that money was used to develop the construction plans for the facility.
And you've got approximately $700,000 and change left to go from the vision fund?
Seems like she said $650,000 and change.
Yeah, we have $652,656 because we already expended $159,344 for the architectural designs and construction plans.
And you've heard the motion that's on the floor right now. Will you be able to work with staff in the timeframe that's allotted?
Yes, we will with Mako.
Yes, I believe we will.
I have a question for Joel, if I may.
Certainly.
Joel, you've heard the motion that's on the floor, and are we looking at having what you need to get done within this timeframe by December 31st? Is that what we're looking at for you? To make all the time constraints and everything that they're looking at for timelines?
Yes, we would need to sit down and start negotiating and then bring something back and get it approved prior to December 31st of this year in order to preserve that funding.
Is that going to be enough time for you to be able to put that together?
I believe so. We'll need to get working on it pretty quickly.
Agreed. Mr. Chairman, the next part of it, I've got some, perhaps some technical questions about the construction site and some issues that look at the areas that we're looking at on the Journey Museum grounds. Who do I address those questions to? Or is it premature to ask those questions?
I think a little early. I think we're going to extend this, I would suggest, maybe when we put this work group together, that maybe you're included as you are the journey liaison. I think that'd work, and I think if there are no other comments, oh, they're lit up like a tree here now. We're going to have to proceed with vigor to get this done. You know, time is going fast. I want to go back to Bonnie Peterson. Are you done, Richie? I'm sorry.
I, I just have some technical questions, and once the timelines get figured out, then we'll have to proceed from there. Thank you.
Bonnie?
Thank you, yes, this is a very exciting project, and they do need the 24 months. And part of the MOU, Richie, is going to be included in there about discussions and kind of discuss options as we proceed about if there's going to be a change of site or what. I think right now we're proceeding as is, but it'll be open for discussion during that timeframe. And I would suggest also that we set up a committee, kind of like we did with the Presidential Plaza, so that there's a core group of people that kind of meet and keep track of, you know, whatever the benchmarks are that they're being met. So that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Richie, I'm going to go back to you. Apparently you have a quick point you want to make before I go to Amanda. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the leniency. What we're looking at, folks, is what I'm concerned about is, this is establishing a new partnership with the Journey Museum as well. So it'll be a new entity with, with that, Mark Board that's in existence now, and what, what that means for, for the new partnership, MOUs, et cetera. Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Daphne, I know you've done an awful lot of work on this, and you've been working, and I know you feel it in your heart as well as your brain and, and trying to keep this going. But one of the concerns is, just like the President's Plaza project, is that this project has been in the works since 2005. If I may direct a question at you, you said that Daphne's recently brought you onboard to help raise funds and that you recently participated through the educational institutes that, that you work with to raise the funds to buy a parcel of land in the Northern Hills here. What was the timeframe in which you were able to gather up all those donations in order to make that purchase?
Well, I'll have to admit that people felt it was kind of an emergency situation because the land was up for auction, so we were in short timeframe, but we, we did that in about six months.
All right. And is it, is the 24-month period that you're looking at and that's being said tonight that it's going to require about a 24-month period, is that your estimation of what it will take to raise the funds in order to, the matching funds in order to get this project off the ground?
You know, I, I think we can raise the matching funds in about a year, and I think it'll take 24 months to, to move the project forward. There's already been a lot of work done on the project in terms of the construction documents, and we're making copies of that to bring that to the mayor and the chairman. I, I think she's pretty well along with this project, and within two years, that would be a good timeframe for us to move forward.
I think that's all the questions I have. I agree with Elder Woman Peterson, this is a great project, but we have other projects that have been on the books a long time, and we just, maybe creating that core group of people that will help keep this on track and keep it moving and maybe the best alternative you've got at this point. So I'm in favor of, of looking to see what we can do to get this project going, but I'm not in favor of, of being here another five years from now. Thank you.
No other comments from the dais? Well, we met for half a day, so you know my feelings, and I think the voice has been said that we support you, but we want something done in a reasonable amount of time, and we'll be working with you to resolve the issues before the deadline of December 28th or December 31st, whatever it is. So let's get with it and let's get serious about it, okay? Are there any questions? Do I have a motion to acknowledge?
We have a motion to direct MOU.
Direct staff, I thank you. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass. Thank you very much, staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I got a conscience up here. Item number three, Black Hills Vision, Much Usera.
Mr. Chairman, fellow council members, my name is Much Usera. I work for Black Hills Power, as you all probably know, and I'm here to represent Black Hills Vision. Chuck Loomis was unfortunately, had conflicts with other meetings, wasn't able to attend, and he is our current chairman of Black Hills Vision. My part in Black Hills Vision, I'm not a boarder director, I'm basically a volunteer through Black Hills Corporation. I offer my services, my expertise in economic development. Been involved with Black Hills Vision since the first phase and continue to do so in working in economic development at that level. I want to do something real quick, not to spend a lot of time and ramble, so I'm going to read, just in case some of you may not know enough about Black Hills Vision and its history. I have it written down here, and I think it'd be a lot easier than just trying to explain it all and showing a bunch of charts. If you don't mind, I'll do that, so this will probably be real quick to do it this way. And then my plan is just to give you an update based on where we're at today. Black Hills Vision is a regional economic development organization committed to advancing the region's quality of life and creating an economic development opportunity environment. Black Hills Vision was conceived by three local regional community partners, Black Hills Community Economic Development, Inc., the Rapid City Chamber of Commerce, and the Rapid City Area Economic Development. It was incorporated as a nonprofit organization in 2004. A $3 million campaign was completed in February 2005 with the five-year pledges from over 115 investors. These investors consist of government and public and nonprofit agencies throughout the Black Hills region. And became also, these investors, 36 of those 115 investors invested over $50,000 to be part of the organization as a partner. Rapid City obviously was one of the leading investors, along with Black Hills Corporation and a few other entities throughout the hills. As a result of input from the community back in 2009, it was identified that Black Hills Vision need to move forward. Basically, the $3 million that was invested basically was utilized during a four-year period from about 2005 to 2009. And a second phase was identified through some studies and some town hall meetings that were done throughout the Black Hills area. So with that, back in 200- that, back in two thousand and ten, a goal of two million dollars was established, and the project is ongoing as of spring of two thousand and twelve. So it's been about a year and a half since Black Hills Vision Phase Two has been going. Currently, we have raised about one point two million dollars. And I'd like to share with you some of the things that have been going on that has impacted not just Rapid City, but Western South Dakota as far as Black Hills Vision. I wanted to share with you, too, if you think about Black Hills Vision, it's somewhat like a United Way organization, where organizations can come to Black Hills Vision with objectives that basically identify economic development goals and objectives. And through a series of presentations in front of the Board of Directors of Black Hills Vision, the board decides whether or not funds can be allocated to those projects, and that's how we move forward today. Board members, in case you're wondering who's involved on the board, Chuck Loomis is the chairman of the board from Black Hills Power, Mike Derby, Derby Enterprises, the past chair. We also have Kevin Whitelock. He's our treasurer of Black Hills with Pioneer Bank and Trust. Gary Lipp is our secretary. He's the mayor of the city of Custer. Sam Quaker, one of our leaders, also a board member, representing the city of Rapid City, obviously, as one of our key investors. Linda Rabey, Dr. Charles Hart, Rapid City Regional Health, Steve Konzett, Wells Fargo, CEO. Bob Nicholson, First Interstate Bank, Ken Davis, County Commissioner here at Pennington County. Jim Aberley represents the city of Lead. Terry Weisenbach, Lawrence County. Chuck Turberville represents the city of Deadwood. Dana Bulke represents the city of Spearfish. Dick Johnson, Black Hills Community Economic Development, and also a partner through West River Electric. He's the CEO of West River Electric. And Randy Morris, Director of West River Foundation. These are our board of directors of Black Hills Vision. So what I'd like to do real quick, if you don't mind, is just share with you some of the things, because obviously, the one point two million dollars that we've invested is not just sitting in a bank. It's being utilized, and that's the whole idea, is to get some activities going that's going to benefit the region. One of the things we did, and we've done it the last three years, we've invested dollars into SETUP, which is the Center for Theoretical Underground Physics. This is part of the Sanford Underground Laboratory projects, where they bring over a hundred scientists to the hills annually during the month of July. And these scientists get together and come up with writing, participating in discussions and collaborative efforts and writing papers about underground science and physics. These scientists come from Japan, Germany, Spain, Italy, where you can get it. They come globally, from all over the world. Obviously, if we were to sit in one of these conferences with them, it's about a week long, probably go way over our heads, but for us to host something that here in the Black Hills is tremendous, and it's the third year, and Black Hills Vision has invested roughly about forty thousand dollars as a key sponsor, which also represents the communities of the Black Hills. The Bakken Conference, we were a main sponsor when Bakken had a conference, where there was a Bakken Conference in Spearfish about two years ago. I believe it was two thousand and ten and/or eleven. It might have been in that timeframe. About two hundred attendees attended. Black Hills Vision became a major sponsor. By becoming a major sponsor, what that allowed us to do is to set up and exhibit a booth, which we allowed all of our partners, our community partners, to work the booth and tell their story about their communities, and also talk a little bit about Black Hills Vision. But quite frankly, it's not about Black Hills Vision. It's about the communities and what we can do on an economic development level in supporting the Bakken up north. Ports to Plains, as you all know, the highway seventy-nine has achieved quite a bit of completion when it came, became a four-lane highway. Well, that project is moving north as from Belfush to the Bakken, up through, up to Canada. I believe it's Highway eighty-five. I believe it's what it is. It's north and south. So Ports to Plains is through the Theodore Roosevelt Express and way, and it's an organization that basically central parts of the states are focusing on trying to create a corridor going north and south. As you know, with the Bakken activity, that highway and a few others up north are really getting used quite a bit and starting to deteriorate. We're looking to obviously expand that, and we want it to turn into a four-lane Highway seventy-nine expressway, so we can see those activities going north and south without any issues when it comes to transportation issues or highway fatalities and so forth. Black Hills Business Council, which are the executive directors of the Chamber of Commerce and the economic development throughout the hills, have came to Black Hills Vision, asked to be part of the Ports to Plains Board of Directors. Now, how do you become a board of director of the Ports to Plain organization? You have to have some funding, and you have to be a member. And we have decided to commit five-year membership of about thirty thousand dollars a year, so we have a seat at the table. And that's what it did. It allowed us in the Black Hills, through the Roosevelt, Theodore Roosevelt Expressway organization, to have a seat at the table as a board member to basically express our concerns, our vision when it comes to creating that highway going north and south. Then finally, the biggest one we're doing right now, you've probably heard a little bit about it, because it involves the regional marketing plan. This regional marketing plan is being implemented right now through Black Hills Business Council, under the team of Ben Snow of Rapid City Area Economic Development, Brian Walker with the Spearfish Economic Development, Blaise Emerson, he's with the Black Hills Community Economic Development, and I'm also on that committee representing local businesses. We also have Pat Curtinbach from Sturgis Economic Development, and we also have Gary Lipp from Custer, the city of Custer. We're looking to create a regional marketing plan that really targets the Black Hills, identifying those key target points and reaching out, not just to the businesses, but to site selectors. It is a known fact, if you're in economic development, and I've been doing this for about twenty years, that it's not just the businesses you're basically courting, but you're courting the site selectors, the realtors, the developers, the ones that are deciding whether or not they want to reside in your community. This marketing plan is not just to develop a fancy website so we can all more or less have more to do when it comes to administrating a website, although that is one of the key components, targeting that to site selectors. We found that site selectors tend to utilize websites quite a bit. But we're also looking at marketing initiatives from collateral to advertising to just hitting those trade shows, similar to what Rapid City did with the Houston Show back in April. We're looking to do the same thing on a regional aspect, really targeting those components that we know can draw companies that bring FTEs, full-time employment jobs, to Rapid City and the Black Hills. So remember, it's not just about one city. It's about the Black Hills region. We have a great story to tell. In fact, I believe tomorrow, at the Rapid City Area Economic Development Office or the Black Hills Incubator, at twelve o'clock, we're going to be giving a report on that regional marketing plan. If you haven't heard about it, it's open to you all. If you'd like to sit in, the agency that we hired to create the plan is going to be giving us a report, and it'll be led by Ben Snow and Brian Walker. So that's tomorrow at noon. That's a big investment. We're talking about a half a million dollars to invest into this regional marketing plan. A hundred thousand of it primarily is going into the research, the development, the creation of the plan, and then the remainder of the dollars will be reaching out on the implementation strategy, how we're going to implement. The plan is great, as you all know, but if you don't have any way to implement it, it just sits on the shelf. It just goes to waste. So we understand, Black Hills Vision Board of Directors, the members of Black Hills Vision understand, and I think that's what makes Vision so successful, is we don't just create plans, we implement. We implement quickly. We don't spend a lot of time waiting to see what's going to happen. And then finally, the big thing after that is really looking at Black Hills Vision moving forward. We have about eight hundred thousand dollars still to raise. We don't have an executive director. If you look at our accounting dollars, not a lot of money is spent on administration. It is all volunteer, myself being one of them, and others like Mike Derby, Chuck Loomis, again, even Ben Snow, Brian Walker, they all come to champion Black Hills Vision, and we work together as a region. This has probably have been one of the best organizations when it comes to bringing communities together. There is never any conflicts. There's never any disputes. We all have a mission, and our mission is to grow the Black Hills, and we believe this has done that very well. So that's pretty much my update, as quick as I can give it to you. If you do have any questions, I sure be happy to answer those as best as I can.
Thank you much. I have a motion to acknowledge. Is there a second? No questions? Those in favor say aye. Go up. Go ahead and ask it before we vote.
Come on, Rich, really? I'm only kidding. Okay.
What's your work phone number? No, 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 no. Much, can you tell me a little bit? I did quick research on Ports to Plains, and I'm not finding much of information. But are you folks involved with the Free Trade Zone and also the Rail Authority? Are you folks anticipating to get involved in that?
Not that I know of. Obviously, the way it works at Black Hills Vision, Rich, if there's an organization or a task force or a group that's looking into getting involved and involved with something like that, they're looking for funding, they would come to Black Hills Vision and request for those funds. You know, as a representation of our region, we really try to find projects that are regional and impact. Ports to Plains, Rich, I don't know a lot about it. I'm not on that committee. I'm more with the regional marketing side of it. But I do know they're really targeting the infrastructure, at least the highway. I don't know about the other components, and I believe if you ever want to know more about that, Ben Snow can probably give you a better update than I could possibly ever give you.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Yeah.
Amanda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know you're just filling in tonight, but one of the ideas that keeps going around in my head is I know budgets all the way around are getting tighter and tighter, and so as you're trying to generate those contributions in order to fund the projects through Black Hills Vision, are you starting to see, and you may not know the answer to this, but this is one of the things that I, if you could pass it back, I'd like an answer to this.
Sure.
Are you starting to see competition with like our Rapid City Area Economic Development and the Spearfish Area Economic Development? It just seems to me you guys are all trying to get contributions from the same pool, and there's only so much money to go around.
I can answer that one for you, because quite frankly, as a representative of Vision, I not only visit Rapid City Common Council, but I visit others as well. It's not as challenging as it may seem. Here's the thing with Black Hills Vision. It's more of a bigger scope vision than a more of a centric of focusing in Rapid City or Custer. So they have their own objectives. They have their own membership base. Their investment to their membership base are not nothing like a Vision investment. A Vision investment normally runs, is at fifty thousand or above. So when we're reaching out, we're reaching at sort of a four- to five-year pledge. We're asking them to look at a bigger picture when it comes to economic development, understanding, similar to the United Way, those dollars you give are going to come back to your community. So they see it as a dual purpose and a dual membership, but we're able to do things that a local entity, like a Spearfish, are not able to do. Obviously, they're not able to draw five hundred thousand dollars to give to an agency or an organization to push a regional marketing plan. That is where we have the leverage, is we're able to bring everyone together for the bigger scope of vision, not really the, you know what I'm talking about, the focused scope of work that each community. We don't want to stop that at all, and we don't want to intervene with that. But so far, it's worked very well. Other challenges sometimes, but yeah, but we still go back and go to communities. Some communities, the budget of timing happens, and we're able to work that out as best as we can.
So is the Black Hills Vision contributors more of those economic development entities themselves rather than competing contributors to those economic developments?
Currently, right-
Is it a different pool?
Actually, currently, it's not really the organizations of economic development. It's usually, most of the investors are government, city, county, and businesses.
And they also contribute to their own regional economic?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it is the same pool of contributors that is contributing to both?
Usually it is. I can speak for Black Hills Power. You know, we're a major investor of Rapid City Economic Development, but we're also invested. But we see, and we're a member of every community, by the way, but we see that again as a different level of playing field, if you know what I mean. It's a different type of implementation strategy, so.
Thank you, Much.
I think you can't afford not to do both, is the way we try to look at it.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
There be no more, no further requests to speak. Motion to be forced to acknowledge. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is the Economic Development, two thousand and ten, Phase Four, from our City Finance Office. I have no request for, is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak that is not, I asked earlier, anyone here to speak on anything other than an item that they're representing? I have one speaker request for him, and that's been filled. If you are, sir, what item are you for?
I was supposed to be here at five-thirty, I think, but the dog ate my homework.
And it was for the downtown parking ramp, or what, sir?
No, that was for the Citizen of the Month. Is that right? That's what? One week from today? Because the gal that gave it to me, because I'm going to be on a vacation for two weeks starting next week, and so they indicated to show up this morning, or show up at this meeting. And then I read five-thirty and six-thirty, so it's just a real mess, I guess, on my part, mostly.
Well, if it's available, you can present it tonight. What do you want to do? Bear? We have a gentleman senator for Citizen of the Month Award tonight, and we don't have it. Okay, Bonnie. Thank you, Bonnie. All right, we're going to go ahead. Economic Development, two thousand and ten, Phase Four, which is Finance Office.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Attached is a report from Ben Snow. In addition to that, I was just going to let you know, with the Opportunity Capture Funds, we have committed all but about fifty thousand dollars of that money. And then on the IDPF loans, we had committed some of that money at one point, and then the applicant reverted it back to the city, and so we still have the full amount remaining on the IDPF loan that is available.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Motion to acknowledge, this is a motion by Mr. Nordstrom to acknowledge, second by John. Did I hear that correct? Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next item is the item number five, which is the Mental Health Collaborative, two thousand and ten through Phase Four.
Again, there is a presentation that is attached, and that I believe came from Mr. Solano. In visiting with him, basically, they are done with establishing the Mental Health Collaborative, and I am merely waiting for an invoice to pay the five hundred thousand dollars to them.
Okay. When is the anticipated date of receipt of the bill and payment? A question that's been asked.
You know, part of the problem is that I talked to him outside of office hours because our kids are friends, and so I probably need to send him a reminder. We didn't talk about a deadline, but it will be this year yet.
Okay. Do we need any, do you want to think back formally on that, or just go? Second by John. Those in favor, excuse me, any further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, Pauline. Civic Center, Energy Plant Report, two thousand and ten through Phase Four. I believe that's you.
It is me. Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tracy Height. I'm the Assistant GM of the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center. Gunar was unable to be here this evening, so I'm here to give you a brief report on the status of the common energy plant. As you are aware, the energy plant is a shared cost and functionality between the Rapid City Area School District as well as the city of Rapid City, with the controls for the services and other city entities being split between the two factions as far as the city, as well as the schools when it comes to the operation of the energy plant. The retrofit of the energy plant was a project that was primarily administered by the school district itself, with the energy plant proper costs being shared between the school district and the city. and the city, basically split 50/50. In addition to that, there were controls that were contracted out as part of the project that were handled by the school system separately from the controls at the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center. Basically, the project is complete, with a few i's yet to be dotted and t's yet to be crossed, some final paperwork, some retainage, those sorts of things that are yet to be completed. And speaking with Skyline Engineering, who basically handled the design fees and did a lot of the lead on the project today, there are still some invoices out there that are remaining, but relatively minor. At this point, we're thinking probably under $50,000 worth. So again, the energy plant, the main project itself, as far as the retrofit of the energy plant itself is handled and awarded to MAC Construction. The controls at the energy plant were awarded to GNR Controls, Civic Center Controls to GNR Controls. And as you can see in the report that Gunar put together and attached, the amount spent to date is $2,744,515.38, with approximately $50,000 still remaining to be paid. That's pretty much my report. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Is the motion acknowledged in a second? I have any speaker requests from Bonnie?
I just wanted to say we get very excited when we think we almost have 50,000 coming back, so.
Well, 50,000 is the amount that we still think we have to pay out.
Oh, no.
But that's, but that is, that's what we see at this point, and like I said, that's after visiting with the engineers today, so.
Oh, darn. I thought we were going to get some money back. Okay.
There will be.
Did I correct?
Oh.
Bonnie.
Okay, well, that's what happens when I come in late. Thanks.
Amanda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just so it's on the record, may I direct some questions at Pauline Sumption, please?
Certainly.
Since there was some confusion, it's, it's not that we're only getting $50,000 back. Pauline, what's the estimated amount? Or, or, let's start with, what was the project amount for this?
$3.5 million is allocated to this project. If my recollection serves me right, the bid came in at exactly $5 million for the construction. I do not recall what the consultant fees were or if there are any change orders. Right now, I ran some numbers, and with everything that has actually been paid out through September 30th, about $755,000 remained. So if there's another 50,000 outstanding approximately, it'll be right around $700,000 that will be turned back in.
Thank you for the clarification, Pauline.
That's what I figured. Thank you.
Better than 50.
Don't everybody water it. That's a lot of money, but we're going to be careful with it. Any further comments or questions? Is there a motion, we have a motion to acknowledge, correct?
Yes.
A second? Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Tracy.
You bet.
Our next item is this Skyline Wilderness Park. Mr. Beaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, Community Committee Members. Skyline Wilderness Area Project, we're happy to say is starting to get underway. We're currently in the contract negotiation stage for the first phase of this project, which will be the design and construction of the parking lots and trailheads for the trail system at the Skyline Wilderness Area. It's anticipated that we will have a contract negotiated and before you, before the City Council for approval at the early November meeting, November 4th, hopefully. And I'm honored to say that we also have allocated funds from our 2014 Parks and Recreation CIP, some additional funding that we had, that we were going to be doing some work at Dinosaur Park with some improvements and some ADA access, and we'll be using those funds to start that project during this phase as well. So we're very happy to see this, this happen. The second phase will be the actual construction of the trails themselves on the hill, as well as reclamation of some of the trails that will be taken out up there that have gone in over the years. The project for design will be completed this winter with the construction of the trailheads and parking lots next summer. The next summer, we'll be doing the design and construction of the trails themselves up there, and with the completion to be in 2015.
Thank you, Jeff. Comments from anybody? Motion acknowledged by Mr. Chad Lewis, and seconded by Bonnie Peterson. We now have a comment request from Richie Nordstrom. Richie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff, can you tell us a little bit about the signage for getting up there to the Skyline Wilderness?
Signage is going to be very important, not only getting folks up there and directing them to parking areas and trails, but also on the trails themselves to make sure that we can clearly delineate trail difficulty, trail locations, destinations, and that sort of thing, and that's all included in this package as well.
Is that from both the east side and the west side signage?
Correct, yes. We will have trailheads on the east side, as well as a couple of trailheads on the west side, so there will be access from both sides of the hill.
Thank you, and one more question for you. Is there any of this work that's going to be able to do in-house rather than contracting it out?
That's yet to be determined, I can, I guess I should say. I know that we will be working closely with the consultant, and our maintenance staff, of course, will be heavily involved in, in some of the, the design and implementation of the trail work. Most of it will be contracted.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure. I see no other comments. I just want to, I know I've talked to you about that trailhead on West End of Florham to get that rock wall tidied up.
Yes.
Thank you very much. If there are no other comments or questions, we have a motion to be forced to acknowledge. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Our next item is the 50-meter pool, leisure pool and fieldhouse, 2010 Phase Four. I assume that's you again?
I'll stay right here, yes.
He didn't move, so I was guessing that, so. You got two guys back there behind you that might be there.
Right. Well, this, this project update actually encompasses three different projects, the 50-meter, the leisure pool, and the fieldhouse. Two of those projects are currently underway to some, some degree. The, the first being the 50-meter pool, which is, is heavily underway, I guess you could say. I don't know if anyone's been by there, but they're in full construction mode at the 50-meter pool location, at the Roosevelt Swim Center location. That is a project that was awarded by council in August to Heavy Constructors Incorporated, and they're currently installing piling caps over the pilings that were driven into the bed of that pool location. They are actually about two weeks ahead of schedule, so we're real pleased with the progress that they're making, and we will have that site open for use in the spring of this next year, 2014. Project is slated to be complete around the 1st of May. Now, the second project is the leisure pool, which is the replacement of the Horace Mann Pool at Horace Mann Park. And as you all know, the, the current or former Horace Mann Pool is now closed for good, and, and the design is, we're just starting the design phase for the new leisure pool, which will include a bath and pump house, parking, and, and other landscape improvements at the site. That design work will be complete by the end of the year, and bids will be going out for the construction in early 2014, with construction and opening slated for spring of 2015 at that location. And then finally, the fieldhouse, which has been kind of a piggy bank for these other projects. You know, back in, oh, earlier this, this, this year, council authorized reallocation of some funds to fund both of these pool projects. The funding came from that fieldhouse line item, and currently, there is about $225,000 left in the fieldhouse line item. We would still like to see a fieldhouse built someday, and so we are still keeping that placeholder there in anticipation of, of some additional funding that may be able to shake loose and, and bring that project to reality.
Listen, my Chad, seconded by Richie to acknowledge. Richie, you had a comment?
I apologize for taking so much time. The question about the fieldhouse, please don't let that go away. We've got some people out there in the public that's interested in this, and I believe this is one of the areas that will help us recoup the costs for the other areas, so if, if we can help you find some money some way, somehow, let us know, please.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
No other comments? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item comes out of Public Works and Engineering. We have the Soccer Rapid City 2005 Phase Three, Mr. Walter Storff.
I'll come up in front, so you don't have to, I'll turn your heads down and look at me. Soccer Rapid City project, we let the first phase of that here a few weeks ago. We'll be beginning construction soon. I don't believe they've started yet. Only thing I would note on this particular project, Phase Two, which is really the parking lot area, would happen in 2015. Keep in mind, currently, there would be a deficit that we're showing of about $850,000 to pull that second phase off. We're not quite sure how that's all going to work out yet, so we really haven't had many discussions on where that funding's coming from. But we do have the first phase under construction, or starting soon here, which is the grading work and the extension of the water mains out there and the irrigation system.
Thank you, Terry. Chad?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I understand it, the $150,000 deficit is not, is not including the $650,000 council allocated for the water and sewer connections last time we met, and/or the $82,000 roughly from Cabela's. Is that correct?
The $650,000 that we were looking at for alternate funding sources, that was when we were investigating the use of raw water out there, and if we were going to use raw water out there and use the funds from Vision to drill the wells for the raw water, then we were going to find the alternate funding source to bring the water mains out there. But based on the report from CTEC, we've chosen not to do the raw water source out there, so all the Vision Fund money right now is going to install the water mains.
That was not the way I understood the, the minutes that reflect either. They also show that we're going to use $650,000 to connect water and sewer to the, the soccer complex.
We better check, excuse us, we better check the minutes and find out actually what happens, is what you're saying?
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, we have a question on the utilization of the 650 plus or minus $1,000 for the water line, whether that was to come out of the water utility or out of the 2012.
SAB funds is where, is that SAB fund?
Can we verify that and have a report back to the council? Would that, would that be a problem? Public Works? Someone like to make a motion to that effect? Okay, come back. Go ahead. We will not close item number nine. Item number 10, ASA softball.
In front of you tonight, I placed an updated spreadsheet that shows the funding and the expense estimates for the ASA softball. We did open bids on this project today. Good news is, the bids came in 30,000, or engineer's estimate. Bad news, the engineer's estimate still shows a shortage of funding here. We would like to place this on the upcoming City Council meeting next week, Monday, for award to RCS Construction, but we are looking at a deficit of about $510,000 to pull this project off.
Pauline? I'm going to acknowledge you at the top of the list, so please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I hit the light for two reasons. This one, we are going to need to award the bid within 30 days, and so if the council wishes to proceed with this, with the current bid that was received today, then we are going to need to identify additional funding prior to awarding that bid. And then when you're ready, I have the minutes from the last meeting.
Let's handle the minutes of the first meeting, or that meeting. Let's handle it first, minutes for the water line?
According to the minutes, it says motion was made by Lewis, seconded by Laurenti, to approve the Soccer Rapid City project as presented with the following stipulations. One, that staff explore the use of $650,000 in SAB funding to extend city water main to the site, and two, that staff explore the development of onsite wells. Lewis voiced his appreciation for everyone's work on the project. Discussion followed regarding the city cost to provide treated water for irrigation purposes. SAS will encourage further exploration of the options and cost to develop the onsite wells. Talk about naming rights. Doyle stated that the Utility Support Fund Committee approval is required for the use of the SAB funds, which we have not had one of those meetings. In response to a question from Nordstrom telling Houston, indicated that all options would be considered in the fundraising efforts. In response to a question from Nordstrom, Walter Storff indicated that if approved, the SAB funding would allow the Vision Funds to be utilized to research development of the onsite wells. Discussion followed regarding the SAB funding, the exploration of the onsite well development, the cost to extend central sewer to the site, and the functionality of holding tanks. Motion carried. So the way I read that, the motion that carried contradicts the statement in the minutes made by Mr. Walter Storff.
Sounds like it. Well, yes, I, I think the question is that intent, Chad, was that the SAB would fund the water line? And it would not come out of 2012?
Correct. The money, 2012 money we just did to explore the.
That was your intent of your motion?
Yes.
Is that proper legal? Finance Officer, you're in a territory. Can we do that? We can make a motion here tonight to do that, I think. To clarify it, apparently, there's some question about that, but go ahead.
And we can go back and listen to the audio to see if there's something missed in the translation. My only comment on using SAB 28 for this is that the SAB 28 fund is set up for assessed projects. If there is no repayment source for this, that poses a, a threat to the fund as a whole, so that in the future, if there are assessed projects to be completed, the funding may not be readily available for, for that to happen. Just like my concern the other night, or the other day, when I was trying to find funding for the Civic Center.
Discussion by this board.
Mr. Chair, if I may, since it wasn't really identified, I mean, these were just identified on the agenda as reports, and this was the Vision Fund, you're not really, even though you are all the city council sitting here, I would recommend perhaps taking this to the committee meeting this week and, and start identifying the funding source, and then you have a few days to, to think about it, and brings, staff can bring some suggestions forward, and you could still approve it on Monday night, or have some, some guidance on Monday night and award the project within 30 days.
So in other words, bring it on to Public Works tomorrow, walk it on with approval of the committee and task, or what, Terry? Go ahead.
My suggestion, look, Phase Two is not going to happen until 2015, so instead of walking it on, let's, let's put it on the October 15 Public Works, and we can have the discussion there, and hopefully have some better, better numbers for what we're going to do.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Can you repeat what the bid amount was today?
On ASA?
On ASA.
We're talking about soccer field right now.
We're going back and forth.
Yeah, we went back to soccer.
We're on a soccer field, and the question is the $650,000 is how do you want to handle the funding of that, and it appears to be, needs to be clarified by formal action by the council. The intent of the councilman was that was to be covered by SAB. Finance has some questions about it, and the counselor is telling us to take it back to committee.
That's fine.
Chad, you have a next position at the microphone?
And so my understanding was at the time is that the fund, the repayment of the loan would be, or the fund would be used to re-extend as people hook on farther, as they move up the road on Nexus Soccer Complex. That was the original intent of the motion. I do believe that, I don't remember the exact audio discussion at this point, but I do remember that was the discussion as far as repaying the $650,000 went.
Mr. Chair, that was all that I was going to chime in on, is when Pauline Sumption had mentioned how we were going to pay it back, the discussion included that as other people were tying into that line, using the SAB fund would be repaid by the tap-in fees as people, as that area developed. That's, that's my recollection.
I know, I think, I know what he's going to say, but just a minute, Terry. Are you done, Amanda? Bonnie, I'll get right to you, Terry. Stand by.
Make a motion to bring this back in two weeks, or bring it to Public Works, and we can work it out there.
Motion to work it out next Public Works, there's a second. Did you want to add anything to that, or are you okay with that?
Or if.
I've already muddied the waters.
Or do you think a month out would be better? Because.
This is on a soccer complex. This is the funding of the water line, correct? We'll get this all straightened out.
Right, because this is not in until 2015, so we could have that $750,000 back from the energy plant, and we would have more options.
Had about two minutes.
I think you already took action the other night to spend some of that, so be careful. That's why my question was this morning, where is our checkbook at? It'll come back to us, the Public Works, on October 15th, if my data is correct in my head, with a probable resolution and the formal action by the committee and forward to the council. And we have motion to that effect, correct? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we'll go to the ASA softball.
All right. Sorry about that.
No, it's all right.
We did, all right. We did open bids today. RCS Construction had the low bid. I believe we had four bids on that today. With all the design fees, construction fees, and some contingency in there. Currently, it was funded at $1.2 million. We are going to be approximately $510,000 short. We would like to place this on the city council agenda on Monday night for award. And, but we need to decide what you're going to do with the funding shortfall there.
Anybody who wants to speak to this? Amanda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll start the questions going. Pauline, as we were discussing this morning in agenda review, this is why we wanted to know what the current unencumbered versus encumbered balances are on all funds, so that we know what our options are. I know you're trying to hide behind Councilman Estes down there, but do you have any idea of where we can come up with $500,000 at this time? Or, because the recommendation I would make is I would ask one of my peers to actually make the same motion on this one. I know you want to award it Monday night, but we've got a couple of weeks here. Bring it to legal and finance and see if we can come up in a couple of days with a funding source.
Public Works.
Or Public Works.
Brad, are you done? Sorry.
Well, I was looking for Pauline to see if she's.
Let's hear from Brad.
Well, we will. Thank you. Well, as I sat in the audience at the last 2012 meeting and I was running for office, I swore that you guys, after the energy plant presented the savings, I thought you guys made a motion to give this softball deal $440,000 that night. You didn't?
No.
It was discussed in the meeting, however, the motion was to continue the report until the next Vision Fund meeting.
All right. Because I, as I thought, is this an additional half a million dollars over the $440,000?
Okay, I want to, are we done speaking? I want to give you a little analogy that I think we should consider. How many of you have ever gone to the checkout station at the grocery store and found out you had more in your basket than you could afford? So what did you do? Put some back. So the question I have to consider also is, can this project be downsized and stay within the budget? And build another field later? In other words, I know there's $1.5 million worth of construction and $45,000 in contingency. Can the project be, are we building four fields? Can we build three fields and get down to the price?
I'll bring the staff expert up.
Or do we have that option? If we don't, we shouldn't. We should. But go ahead.
This, this project is actually two fields, and it's a little bit misleading because it's a little more than two softball fields. It's a major detention facility, which is immediately to the south of there. It's also, you know, a parking lot that, you know, that we need for this increased capacity. We really kind of stripped everything off of this project that we could, and quite honestly, there's, there's really no way that we could strip $500,000 off of this project. I mean, we would basically just have to not do the project.
Well, if you did, everything in one field, would it be under five, would it drop at 500,000?
Say that again, if.
If you didn't complete one field, would it be?
If we cut it in half, we'd really have to go back to design. But the thing is, we're still building this metering facility, you know, we're, you know, we still need this additional parking. So I think, you know, based upon the discussion at the last Vision meeting, the direction that we were given was basically to proceed. I will say this, that we did strip back as much as we could. Really, the problem with this project, that it was, that it was not budgeted properly to begin with. You know, a lot of these projects were put together by the, you know, by the various organizations at the time. They did not include any of the soft costs that you see on that sheet, you know, which is fairly substantial. And then, you know, they, we, obviously, you know, there's, you know, things that you can anticipate, the amount of dirt work, so on and so forth. So really, we're in a position of either, you know, I think, awarding this as it is or just rejecting the bids.
Well, before I turn the mic over to someone else, I do think we might need to look at that grocery cart. Because we don't have unlimited money, and we've already had demands upon what was, we saved in one project. But I'm going to turn this back to the entire commi, I have four people who want to speak on this, but I think that we need to take a hard look at what we're doing. Chad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to use the, some of the leftover money from the energy fund to fund the $500,000, $9,000 shortfall. If I can get a second for discussion even. Okay, thank you. I guess I'm in agreeance with.
By Chad and seconded by John. Thank you.
What was said earlier is we did have this discussion, I believe it was Alderman Roberts might have made the original motion to use the $440,000. I'm not sure, but we did, we did discuss this with them. They told us they were going to be, they explained the shortfalls, and there was an extra detention dam that had to be put in because it was wetlands, I do believe in them, correct, in saying that? And we had kind of more or less, we said we'd wait till the money came back to make sure it all was actually there. But we were going to go ahead and fund. This is what we pretty much told them. And I think that, you know, we can't really just kill the, we'll kill the project basically if we take out anything. I don't think we can take out anything more. It's my understanding, having, I haven't talked to these people since the last meeting, but I do believe that it's important that we keep this project moving forward. You know, we're going to be $60,000 north of what we originally discussed, but I think it's important that we keep it going. I think that we made a more or less commitment. Once again, I don't know that, you can hold me tight, I don't want to, whatever, but I think that's important. We get forward with this project, award the bid, and move on. Because I don't know that we're going to find, it's either kill it now or, I mean, what are we going to do on Monday night? We're going to discuss it again and decide if we're going to do it, or, that's my opinion anyway.
Thank you. Richie.
I don't, I don't know if this motion is appropriate here, but I'd like to see this motion to reject all bids and reauthorize for the bids to go out for another, another round of bidding. I don't know if this is the time for that, but this $500,000 is just way too far off for me.
We're going to stay in line. Are you done, Richie?
Yep.
Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As far as I'm concerned, that would not be an appropriate motion at this time because the bids have not been brought forward. And I believe usually Public Works likes to review those bids to make sure that all the addition and subtractions and all that are carried through. The reason why I really hit my button is I have a few options for you. Yeah, you could take the money from the leftover from the energy plant. Right now, we have $935,000 sitting in contingency. That is two years' worth of contingency. It's broken out between infrastructure, civic improvements, and economic development, but that would be a funding source. If the parking structure is not going to proceed this year, there's $2.8 million budgeted there, that you could push $500,000 off to next year and reallocate that $500,000 to this year. And then next year's balance would still be around $1 million on the cash. If you look at the actual spreadsheet that's attached.
Amanda. Thank you, Pauline. Are you done?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Pauline, basically, and here we go again, talking unencumbered and encumbered. Are you saying there's currently $1.5 million unencumbered, excuse me, unencumbered in the Vision Fund at this time?
Actually, as of now, for 2013, let me make sure I'm looking at the right column. 1.1 million of unencumbered cash. However, if you take, look at 2014, there's 1.6 million projected as unencumbered cash. And so if you push $500,000 from the parking ramp to 2014 and free up the $500,000 in 2013, the 2013 amount will stay the same. But the 2014 unencumbered cash would then drop to about 1.1 million instead of the 1.6.
Okay.
And that's not including the $700,000 from the energy plant. So you could add that back in, and you would have an additional $700,000 of unencumbered.
But to clarify, you're taking this all out of contingency for Vision for 2013, correct?
That would not be using contingency money.
Unencumbered.
That would be unencumbered. And again, you would have to shift a little bit of money either from the energy plant or the parking ramp or use the contingency line items.
Okay, thank you. Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to still go back to the night I sat out here. And, and, and Mr. Brooks, who fell into having to give the presentation, got up and gave you guys a story about being within $440,000, I recollect, short. And I mean, you guys came up with the, he left here, and I left here thinking, he left here thinking he had the money. I mean, I think they proceeded with the idea, and I didn't hear, I don't recollect hearing anybody say, "I'm not going to support that." No, we could go back and watch the movies, but as I see it, they're within $69,000 of being on budget. Because I think he left here thinking that you guys had made a commitment on that $440,000, in my mind. And it, you know, they're within about three and a half percent of, you know, that's, that's what the $69,000 represents on the million seven. I think it'd be terrible to pull the plug on them now. I mean, you guys have every right to change your mind if you want, but they, I got to tell you, that guy left here thinking that he had the support of this outfit to get the, with the leftover money from the energy plant. That they had $440,000 in the bank. Thank you.
Can I ask just clarification? If that's true, why wasn't the current Vision funding reflecting that motion, the 1.6? What's your look on, Amanda? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to offer a substitute motion. If I can get a second, I'd like to make the motion that we go ahead and allocate the $510,000 from unencumbered Vision funds and bring forward that same amount from the President's Plaza Parking Project that does not look like it will need it until next year and be able to award this bid on time.
Second.
Seconded by John and Richie, so any further discussion?
It kind of goes across two topics because of the energy plant. And in response to a question from Roberts, Zentars indicated that the unexpendanted funding would be approximately $75,000. Discussion followed regarding the estimated balance of the unexpendanted Vision funding from the energy plant project. And then their motion to acknowledge that. In response to a question from Peterson, let's see. Sumption estimated the unexpendanted funding from the energy plant project at $474,000. Sumption cautioned that the actual unexpendanted balance cannot be determined in the project until the project has been finalled. In response to a question from Peterson, Burns indicated that the additional funding will be required by August to allow the project to be bid and constructed by year end. SASSO suggested building alternates into the project bid in anticipation that the additional funding may not be available. Burns indicated that the project has been restructured to include necessities only, knowing the amenities have been removed from the project. Motion was made by Scott, seconded by Roberts, and carries to continue the ASA softball presentation to the next Vision Fund Committee meeting.
Which is now, right? So there was no action to actually fund it, so go ahead. Correct? Consider it. Consider it. Other comments? The motion was to. Unencumbered Vision Fund. Your motion back, please.
I just have that Amanda said to allocate $510,000 from unencumbered funds from the parking fund.
To bring forward and borrow $510,000 from the President's Plaza Parking Project to the 2013 budget, but we're actually paying for it out of unencumbered Vision funds. The funds will be made up in 2014, backed into that President's Plaza project.
Everyone clear on that motion? We're basically borrowing money from the $2.8 million and set aside for the President's Parking Plaza to fund this project this year, and next year will be recovered by unencumbered reserves or whatever, correct? Am I clear on that? Are we clear on that? So that we would, we're going to authorize, but it takes action, what, Monday night to do that, correct, won't we?
Correct.
Any further discussion on the motion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Is there a, I have a question, a housekeeping question for you in the future. Where we have a project like this, where we have a commitment supposedly to adjust the funding, that maybe we bring that forward sooner so we don't have the issue after a contract is opened? I know, but. Jim getting that? Are we?
Yeah, we probably could have had the discussion when we had the Advertising Authority a month, a month ago, probably. I think the Advertising Authority probably showed $1.4 million, I would guess, maybe $1.5 million, but.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Let me, a lot of hay ringing. Okay, thank you. Next item is Canyon Lake Dam Reconstruction, 2010 Phase Four. Do we vote, did we vote on that motion? I'm sorry. We did, didn't we? Thank you. Canyon Lake Dam Reconstruction. Terry?
All right. Thank you, Chairman, and I do apologize that, that we're doing our best to get these projects out the door and built. It's just unfortunate that a lot of the budgets just were never set up at an appropriate level to help us really get that done. But good news Canyon Lake Dam, not here asking for money tonight. Project started today. We started draining the lake this morning, so we're well on our way to having an empty canyon lake here. Skull Construction is doing that work for us, about $3.7 million. Work on the spillway itself should be completed by first part of March to allow for the overflow, the flows necessary for irrigation season, which will be starting usually early April. And other than that, things are proceeding as we had hoped.
Chad.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or Councilman, President, whatever. Quick question for you, Terry, just because constituent has sent me a couple of emails on this. Are we going to be doing any remediation of the growth seaweed or whatever it is that's on the floor, why the, why the water's down? Are we taking any of that out of there?
We are doing some sediment removal, but the way we have it currently in the budget and in the plans, the sediment removal we were doing was in the deeper parts of the lake where the sediment was two to three, almost four feet deep in some areas, more in the central part of the lake. We did not have adequate funding to do all the sediment removal around the exterior. Having said that, we also have gotten some concerns from Black Hills Fly Fishermen about wanting to do some additional sediment removal. To be honest with you, the shopping cart's full, and we just didn't have the money to do it all. We are going to take a second look at that, and I think we'll probably be meeting with South Dakota Game Fishing Parks, probably have some discussions with our contractor, Skull Construction, and, and probably Black Hills Fly Fishermen and say, "Look, we, we know we have a certain amount of money, about $140,000 allocated for sediment removal. If instead of doing it in this particular area, if, if you think there's other areas you'd rather have us concentrate on, and we can do it at the same unit prices, we'll work through those details here in the next couple of weeks." work through those details here in the next couple weeks. But, in a nutshell, right now, the answer is no, we're not going to do sediment removal around the entire lake. Most of those areas only have six to eight inches of sediment.
I guess the question was more about the, whatever the, the plants that grow in the water, and correct terminology for those are, and not seaweed, obviously, but-
Aquatic plants.
I don't know. Okay. That's, just thank you for clarifying that. Thank you.
That's caused more by depth and shallowness in vegetation than sediment, correct? Other comments? As our discussion was today, keep us posted, and if we find the pot of money somewhere, maybe we could do a little more sediment removal, but other than that... Is the motion acknowledged and seconded by, made by Chad and seconded by Amanda? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mount Rushmore Road Corner, 2010 Phase Four. Terry?
Not a lot of update from the last time I met with you, other than just verification that the DOT has split this into three phases. First phase will be constructed next year, 2014. That will go from basically Tower Road down to Florham. And then, 2015, they'll build Florham down to St. James, and then the last year, 2016, will be St. James down to Kansas City Street. We do anticipate, hopefully, seeing some utilities starting to, to be relocated even late this fall.
Any comments? Other, I have a, Bonnie, go ahead, Bonnie.
There, I got it. Terry, I just wanted to thank you and all of your people for all of the work you do to help support the council, and I know I'm always sending you an endless list of emails, and I appreciate all the work that you and your staff do to help the city run smoothly. You seem to get an inordinate burden put on you sometimes.
You're welcome.
I have a question for you on Mount Rushmore Road. How are we doing? There was some talk of acquiring some property to, just for the on-street parking that's being taken back. What's the status on that?
Most of the areas where we still have some unknowns on the parking is that area between, well, between St. James and Kansas City Street, that last, that last leg that they'll be working on in 2016. The DOT is not far along, far enough along in the design of that portion for us to know exactly, exactly the details of what we'll be doing with some off-street parking there. Hopefully, here, within the next 12 months, we'll know a little more detail.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? I have a motion to adjourn from Mr. Chad Lewis. Is there a second from, second from Bonnie? That's who I recognize. Any further discussion on the motion to adjourn? Those in favor say aye. Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you for everybody for being here. There are some sandwiches left, I bet.